You're listening to Earnestly Speaking, the only weekly podcast that covers friends, foes, and anything that goes. And now, for your badass host, Ernest Owens.
And we're back with another episode of Earnestly Speaking with your host, Ernest Owens, myself. Well, we are less than 24 hours away from Election Day. If you are listening to this on a Monday, which is the day before the election, you know we're hours away, we're hours away from Election Day. I will be voting in person in West Philly on November 5th. I did not do a mail-in ballot or any of that. And I'm not against early voting, you know, let me be very clear, you know, I have nothing against people who filed their ballots early, the earlier the better for some folks. But I just love the day of Election Day. I love to, to, to go into the line and vote. Now, I'm an early bird, so if you're listening to this, um, you know, as you're going to work, then I'm most likely in that line around 7:00 AM, say, 7:00 AM-ish on a Tuesday. You know, that, that's my, that's my time. So right now, you know, as you're on a Monday, going to work or doing what you're doing, or if you're listening to it midday or whatever on a Monday, you know that Tuesday, you can expect me out early in the morning. Like, the polls open at 7:00 AM, okay, 7:00 AM. And, you know, Mr. Johnson likes to jog and all that. Listen, I'm gonna, I'm going to get there around 7:15. It's not that far for me. My polling location is walkable. But I gotta get up early anyway because there'll be lots of election coverage from yours truly, and I am so happy to be able to share some of that with you all. It's November, happy November. I have a lot of energy because, you know, daylight savings have kicked in. We're, we're falling back an hour, we're not springing forward, so I got a little bit of energy. And I will tell you that the only time you really get the benefit or feel the full benefit of daylight savings, I know people talk about the late hours and it gets darker and all that kind of stuff, whatever. I'm talking about the actual full impact of that hour is on that Sunday. Like, you wake up and you're like, oh, I feel like I got an extra hour of sleep. You, you really do feel that extra hour of sleep. You, you do feel that extra hour. Everything feels a lot more, you feel a lot more energized to do whatever you're doing. You don't feel like you've been, something's been stolen from you. You feel the gain, I feel like, in the first day. After that, you know, your body kind of adjusts, you kind of feel like, okay. But I feel like the first day of daylight savings time is when I, I, I feel it the most personally. But we're in November already, we're already towards the end of 2024. I was finally, I want to say maybe this summer, finally feeling like it was 2024, and now we're about to get into 2025. But, you know, time is, time is going by fast. This podcast, I mean, we're, we're, well, we're doing what? Four-year, our four-year anniversary coming up very soon. Four years. Season eight is dropping, you know, in January. Like, we're just, we're just going, we're just going with the flow, right? My goodness, like, what, 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 what a time, what a time. Like, this election is finally about to conclude, thank goodness. We're literally counting down the hours because, woo, I am, I'm ready. I'm, I'm ready for whatever, okay? I have thoughts. I think Harris is gonna win, okay? Let me just be clear, I think she is. I'll talk more about that in this episode. I, I'm not, you know, I'm not nervous, but I'm also a black man, I'm also a black voter. So, you know, I know we did our part. So, I, I just, look, we did what we could do. We, we've been doing what we could do every election. So, I don't have all of that, you know, white folks, like, bring that, take that anxiety somewhere else. White women, all of y'all, you be all, you know, I don't need that. Don't tell me that, I don't care. Just, just go figure it out. Go, go knock on doors, okay? Go, go canvass. This weekend, apparently, there were 2,000 doors knocked a minute, I believe, in Pennsylvania, they said? A minute. 2,000 doors knocked a minute on, on average in Pennsylvania this weekend. That's how much canvassing was happening across the Commonwealth. Okay, Pennsylvania is a battleground state. Everyone is, is on the edge. They need to get as much voter turnout in Philadelphia. They're hoping that that can help save the Commonwealth to stay blue. It's been blue for the past election cycle, 2020, it was blue. 2016, it wasn't, but 2020 it was. And they want to keep that momentum for 2024. And it can happen. Now, it is important to note that, see, here I go, I'm supposed to wait for this, but let me just say that it's important to note that in 2020, while Pennsylvania did turn blue, Philadelphia didn't, was not the reason, it was the suburbs. We actually underperformed in 2020. We can't do that this time around because the suburbs, I, I do hope that the suburbs show out, but we also need to show out too in a big way. So, you know, I'm just saying, I'm just saying. You know? I'm just saying, you know what I'm saying? You know, for sure. Because a lot of people, you know, are putting money in Philly, but we'll get to that. I want to, I want to get into updates for you on a lot of things that have come up. So, November, November is fabulous. We're gonna talk about some stuff coming up with that. But it's November, but before we go to November, I need to go back to Chicago because a lot of you all saw my lovely romantic rendezvous in Chicago and wanted to know about some things that went down. So, that Monday, last Monday, I went to Avec. Mr. Johnson and I had a lovely date night before the Usher concert. We went to Avec, which is this Mediterranean restaurant that is very, very popular in Chicago. It's Avec, it's A-V-E-C. It is, I believe, downtown. You know, it's really hard to know what's downtown Chicago because I feel like a lot of parts of Chicago is very nice, so I thought it was downtown. But it is definitely a lovely time. It was a lovely restaurant. It was, it was very unique and different, and I have to say that I think I know my five, my top five restaurants, you know, i- i- in my favorite food cities. Now, in no particular order because I don't want to wreck, uh, I don't want to rank because I feel like that doesn't do it justice. But, you know, I will say, we were in the north of the West Loop, that's what it's called, West Loop. West Loop, I believe. We was in the lovely West Loop area of Chicago, which is where we stayed most of the entire trip. But my top five restaurant cities in America, New Orleans, Philadelphia, New York, Chicago, Houston. In no particular order, so I'm not saying the number one is New Orleans. New Orleans is great, but I don't know if it's my number one because I feel like to be a number one, you have to have multiple cultures and experiences. Now, they're definitely in the top five for me, but I feel like my ta- my, my five favorite cities again is Philadelphia, New York, Chicago, Houston, of course, and, and New Orleans. Like, those are my five top food cities, restaurant cities in the city, in the country, uh, for me. Now, there might be other cities y'all talking about, but I think those are my top five. I feel like those are my top five favorites. Like, Philadelphia is great, okay? Versatility is there. Chicago was definitely great. I, I like Chicago because Chicago is fun because it has this very great, you know, very local food scene. They have their special local food delicacies, but they also have a very serious upscale restaurant, you know, high dining scene that is impeccable. New York i- i- is just, has to be on the list because New York City is the, is, is a very major city in a, in the world. And of course, they have serious restaurants, Michelin-star restaurants, they, they got, they got that going on, right? Philadelphia, we don't have a Michelin-star restaurant rating system, but Philadelphia is just, I mean, James Beard, honey. Like, the James Beard does not skip our city. We, we have lots of, of, of well-renowned restaurants, and we also have a very great local food scene as well. Houston is just at the epicenter of all these various cultures. Houston just has all of these various intersections of culture and history and everything. That's just a great food city. Like, everyone knows it about Houston. New Orleans, I mean, the culture is there as well. They have a very deep local food scene that is impeccable, more so than everything else around them. But they just have a very strong, distinct local food culture that you just can't skip as well, right? And so, that just rounds out my top five for me. Those are my five cities. If there is, you know, like, people say about Atlanta, no, it's not. Atlanta is not, I mean, come on, let's be for real. DC has some great restaurants, but i- it's not a food capital in that regard. I just know. I mean, it's a lot of vibes and brunches, and they do have some, I mean, they have some stellar, you know, a couple of nice notable ones, but as a food scene, it's just not there. Los Angeles, eh, lots of chains, um, a couple of fun spots, but nothing that just really puts it in that top five conversation. There's a couple of honorable mentions, right? Um, I don't, can't think of any right now, maybe, you know, Raleigh, North Carolina, you know, decent. I don't think Miami's in that conversation. I think there are some great places in California that are underrated, you know, like Sacramento, places around Napa Valley, around that area, but not, not, not top five, but could be in the top 10. You know, people talk about Portland a lot. Portland could probably be in the top 10, but not in the top five. The Twin Cities, you know, I want to make sure I shout the Twin Cities. The Twin Cities got something good going on over there, um, but, but not top five. Yeah, I mean, other cities are, you know, there's some other great cities, you know, but, but not, but not top five. That's my top five. Okay, you can debate your cat, but that's my top five. I feel like tha- that's just, that's just it for me. Go to any of these five cities for food and, and you're gonna have variety, you're gonna have options, you're gonna have heritage, you're gonna have cities and stories to tell people. So, tha- that's it for me. Those are my top five, okay? Nashville definitely needs to go in the top 10. Shout out to Nashville. I, I'll give Nashville some love. Definitely in the top 10, but not top five. Now, let's get to Usher. The Usher concert was everything I thought it was gonna be and then some. Immaculate, incredible, you know, listen, I'm not crazy about going to that many men on concert. I'm not a crazy male artist person. Um, I mean, I might enjoy some male artists as far as music, but I often feel like, you know, is my ticket worth it? Because I'm not crazy about going to rap concerts because if I do go, I want to have great seats. But then I'm also like, if I go to a rap concert, the rappers on the mic, do I really care about being front row for a guy spinning bars? Like, I like a show. I want, you know, costumes, I need dancing, I need artistry, I need live music, I need a show. And it's not that many live, there's not that many male artists that I feel like can give me a good show. And then there is Usher, who is his own phenom. I mean, Usher is one of the greats of our generation. I mean, when we talk about Beyonce, when we talk about artists in that level, Usher is right there. Usher is, they're siblings to me when it comes to talent and artistry. Like, like, there's nothing close to a male performance of our generation that, that matches that energy than Usher. And that, to me, the Usher concert felt like the male Renaissance. It was just a beautiful, like, ensemble of his hits. Like, he goes back to the 90s and brings us to now, and it was the perfect balance. Like, there's no skips. He does perform some of his new tracks, but not too much, like, only the stuff that we really, really want, right? But he plays all the hits. There's no skips, there's no misses. This show is 2010 incredible, and I mean, 20 over 10, that was how great it was. The mic is on, Usher gives you a range. Yes, there's body, he, oh, he is shirtless, oh yes. The sex appeal is there, he does a lot, he's a, gets a little raunchy, which I enjoy. It's a, it's a grown folks concert. You know, he comes out, he wears the, I mean, it's, it's Leo, it's, it's like, like, I don't know, li- like, Lerachi. It's Liver, Liverachi energy, it's, it's, it's Michael Jackson energy, it's Keith Sweat energy. I mean, he does, he goes through his pop era, he goes through his smooth R&B. I mean, it's a great show. Mr. Johnson surprised me with those seats. We were on the floor, we were front row. My nose was like eye level with the stage, like, we had the seats. And I took pictures, video, I mean, we were on the floor. Those seats were immaculate. Okay, I, I, I wasn't, listen, like, I wasn't expecting that. Like, I was like, oh, we're gonna have good seats. He said, oh, there're gonna be good seats. Those were not no good seats, y'all. Those were great seats. Those were fucking incredible. Those were the seats. Like, we were on the, like, we were there. The show was incredible. I, I enjoyed it. It was awesome. It was very black. Chicago was Chicago-ing. It was black Chicago in the building. I mean, it was a, it was a great time. It was a great time. I, I, I just, words can't describe it. And for those of you who want to talk about a certain other artist that you all are saying, well, what about that other male artist that you're not mentioning named Chris Brown? Let me tell y'all something. Look, I've seen YouTube footage of Chris Brown's concerts. The boy dances his ass off, okay, we know that. Clearly, he does a lot of other dancing with his hands in very violent, problematic ways. But even with all the domestic violence and all of the violence and all of the disrespect, there is nothing that compares to a male, to a, to a male performance wise, there's no show that compares. Look, Bruno Mars might be second to that. Like, Bruno Mars on the mic is great, but Bruno Mars ain't dancing. Bruno Mars is not doing, Bruno Mars ain't on no roller skates. I'm not saying the Bruno Mars show is not worth it because Bruno Mars is a great performer, but maybe Bruno Mars might be in that conversation. But baby, Bruno Mars is, he's not giving y'all that. Now, I know y'all like to see him in, in Vegas and y'all will let it go to his concerts. And we're not talking about Justin Timberlake because in 20, the 2020s, Justin Timberlake, child, bah, that ain't even in the conversation. Now, on Chris Brown, because people like to bring up Chris Brown. Chris Brown, I mean, dancing, sure, but the, 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 he's not singing, y'all. He's not singing. He does not have the vocals. He does not have the energy to give vocals and do all of that. Usher is a trained performer where that man is dancing, singing, doing everything else. Nothing compares. I'm sorry, nothing compares. Because Ush- because Chris Brown's gonna sweat out, he's gonna dr- he... Let me, allegedly. He is going to flip out in more ways than one, and I just, I mean, look, you get what you pay for over there. If you want to see somebody, if you want to see that, by all means, go. But I wanted something that has a lot more polish, class, elegance, cohesion. Another thing I'll say about, about the Usher concert is that the man performed for two hours straight. I checked my clock. He got on that stage at nine, he was off that stage at 11:05. He gave a full two-hour show, okay? There was no, and this is a two-hour show with no opening act. When I tell you, we came at eight, the DJ, the hype, they hyped the show up, the crowd, we got there around eight o'clock, we got in our seats good. For an hour, it was a vibe, it was DJ, it was the crowd, people coming in or whatever. Nine o'clock, that man got on stage. I saw him walk off that stage at 11:05 PM. He performed for two hours straights, no, no breaks, inter- and, and, listen, that man gave his all. For two hours. Okay, Usher is 46 years old, and the man has it, still completely has it. Past, present, future, the show was great. I kid you not. If he's still got tickets and you want to fly out or something, it is worth it. It is worth it. It was worth it. Mr. Johnson left, he said, that show was worth every penny. I said, it wa- I mean, you know, because some of you all would spend money like that for a s- let me not throw shade at SZA, but some of y'all would play, y'all would spend money like that for a Frank Ocean show and will be, and will be, and will sit up and say, why did I do that? Some concerts are not worth it, but I will say that if I'm going to a concert, it's gonna be worth it. Beyonce, Taylor Swift, Usher did not disappoint me. Great show, phenomenal show. I just gotta give this man his props completely. Now, I want to other great people. Sunday, this past weekend marked the 110th anniversary of the only single-letter alumni chapter of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, the fraternity and the specific chapter that I am a proud life member and brother of. And that is the Row Chapter. We just celebrated our 110th anniversary. Do not be confused. Alpha Phi Fraternity Incorporated was founded in 1906, okay? Now, they're older than us, but we're not that far from them. In 1914, okay, eight years later, Row Chapter was founded on a, on an election day in Philadelphia. And here we are, 110 years later, on its 110th year, a Neo was born. So, I am, I am super happy. Um, we are celebrating our 110th anniversary with the Harvest Moon Ball, which will be on Friday, November 15th, at the Museum of the American Revolution in Philadelphia. And if that might sound familiar to you, that is where the PABJ, my organization, Philadelphia Association of Black Journalists, had our gala at last year. And you can only imagine, what does that have to do with me? I am the chair of the Harvest Moon Ball, our 110th anniversary celebration. Yes, they got me working it already. I am the proud chair of this incredible gala that is celebrating the Row Chapter. It is going to be epic, and it is going to be not this Friday, but next Friday. Tickets are still on sale now. Um, I'm super excited to be a part of it, and I cannot wait for this to happen. And as you all know, this Saturday, uh, November 9th, will be PABJ's 50th anniversary. Our gala is happening this Saturday, okay? I'm excited. This Saturday, okay? At the Penn Museum, 50th anniversary, and you all know, I've been waiting for this. So, yes, I got two back-to-back galas I've been planning for several weeks and months, and I'm excited for it to be over. I'm, I'm not excited for it. Okay, I'm excited for it to be finally here. How about that? The planning for this has been a lot, and I've had fun. I can't, I, 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 I've had fun. But I am ready for the show to happen, okay? I am ready for the show to happen. The fundraising, the marketing, we, we, we hit our numbers, we're doing great. Tickets are still available, get them while you can, uh, for both events. But back-to-back galas, tuxedos, fittings, I am ready for it all. I got my new Telfair bags, I'm ready to drop and wear, uh, I got my looks, both of my looks, my shoes, everything, wipe me down, okay? Wipe me down. I am ready for it all. So, those two galas, back-to-back. So, this weekend, we celebrated in a big way. We had some, some community service events. We did a college fair, um, service event, um, that was at the Pennsylvania Convention Center. Hundreds of students came for the college fair that was in collaboration with, um, various universities. We had dozens of universities from across the country, um, participate in the college fair, big national college fair. Philadelphia regional students, um, high school students came, a lot of black and brown students, because a lot of our public school students are black. So, they were there, and we were there, um, volunteering and serving. The Row Chapter was. We had a really great reclamation event in Northwest Philly at a black-owned spot called Jules. And let me just say, and that's Jules spelled, um, J-U-L-Z. And I just gotta say that that was some of the best sold food I've had in Philadelphia. I kid you not. I, I kid you not. I am shook. The sold food at Jules was some of the best sold food I've had in Philadelphia. The mac and cheese, the lamb chops, the yams, the collard greens with the turkey butt meat, incredible. And I, that shook me. I'm surprised. I, I was so surprised. I was so impressed that I even brought a platter back home for Mr. Johnson to try. And he likes to be very much, you know, on his, on his meals, playing or what. Listen, he skipped that, okay, and ate that and tore that up. I was shook. I, 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 Jules is the bomb, and it's, it's far from, from where I live in West Philly, but the food was incredible. I, I gotta give credit where credit was due. I was impressed. This weekend was a lot of different events. Seat at the Table, which was an election campaign event, um, to get out the vote, a nonpartisan event, um, that was in Philly. Vic Mensa, the rapper, now entrepreneur, and, um, everyone's favorite light-skinned cinematic villain, who everyone just loves, uh, the actor. Now, the, the great, incredible, um, campaign, uh, surrogate for Kamala Harris. Both of them are surrogates, but this guy, um, needs really no introduction. But he, he, he's, he's, he's that guy. Everyone loves him. And if I, and if you don't know what I'm talking about, Michael Ealy. Yes, I've met and saw Michael Ealy and Vic Mensa, but Michael Ealy has been out in Philadelphia campaigning hard for the Harris campaign and made a guest, made a guest appearance, heartthrob, everybody loves him. He was there, Vic Mensa, like I told you, was there. Yes, the pandemonium, the pandemonium was definitely high on Sunday, the final weekend of election, of the election. Other things I did this, this week, um, Martin Truex, which my, one of my favorite chefs in the city, Chef Jamir Wimbley Cole, he did this, this is a, a supper club, he did what, Ocho Supper Club? They had a tasting on Sunday, a special, um, you know, supper club dinner special that they did. The food was incredible. This is gearing up because him and of course Chef Montana Houston, again, the, the dynamic duo, the two of them who used to be the top chefs at Restaurant Alexander. They're now about to open their restaurant that they're about to take the culinary lead of, The Avery, which is weeks away, apparently. They've been telling me that, like, it's coming, it's coming, it's coming, and so I am literally waiting for The Avery to open. It is one of the most anticipated restaurants of the year. They're, they're about to open their doors. I cannot wait. You know, I've been a big fan of them for a minute, so it's going down. It's going down. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's gonna be great, um, to see, to see where, to see where we're landing. Um, it's gonna be, it's excited, uh, it's exciting to see, you know, who's gonna, who's gonna land on this big list, because this is gonna be epic. To see what the restaurants are, who's coming, uh, there's gonna be so much, there's gonna be so much fun. So, yeah, I'm excited about that restaurant. Went to see Hamilton at, um, the Academy Music, which is a part of Ensemble Arts. That's what they go by, Ensemble Arts. Great show. You already know how I feel about Hamilton historically, about like the concept of that show, the historic, the history elements of it. I talked about it in depth, what, three years ago? It was an anniversary gift for Mr. Johnson and I. Right after we got married, we went to go see Hamilton, and I went into a whole deep dive about how I feel about the Hamilton show. That aside, I really like this cast and picked up on things I didn't pick up the last time I saw the show. This time, I went with my younger brother, who of course is a Temple senior, and he's never seen Hamilton, so this has become our, our pastime, is going to go see Broadway shows and seeing shows at Ensemble Arts, you know, Academy Music, all the big musicals and shows. We've made a thing of this. I love it. I love this, this Big Brother, Little Brother time. We spend seeing some great theater. He liked the show, the sh- the show did it for him. Like, I knew he was gonna like Hamilton. I feel like any Gen Z-er, you know, younger millennial, that's, that's, that's their show, you know? Hamilton's celebrating its 10th anniversary next year. It landed on Broadway in 2015. It's gonna be 10 years of Hamilton, which is right now, you know, as you all know, Hamilton is now one of the Mount Rushmore's of Broadway, you know? The Mount Rushmore to me is Wicked, uh, Phantom of the Opera, Chicago. You know, that's what, that's Mount Rushmore to me. Lion, The Lion King, you know, we gonna add a couple of more heads to the Mount Rushmore. Le Mes, like, tha- tha- that's the Mount Rushmore of Broadway to me. It's not that many of them. But when we talk about Mount Rushmore, Hamilton might be the newest addition. You know, since, I mean, you know, Wicked and Hamilton, modern-day Mount Rushmore, Wicked and Hamilton, The Lion King. You know, all-time, Chicago, Le Mes, Phantom of the Opera. You know, tha- these are, these are legendary. You know, The Lion King, you know, like I said, those are the Mount Rushmore of Broadway. Hamilton is up there, one of the greatest-selling Broadway musicals of all time. It's a goat. One of the goats, one of the goats. You know, that, that, you know, you, you, you know, when you ask any everyday people to name a Broadway musical, the, the, a lot of them are gonna say Hamilton. Like, that's how iconic Hamilton is, and Wicked as well. The Lion King, right? The Lion King is just, when we're talking about all-time IP, intellectual property, like, all-time IP, The Lion King is, is definitely gotta be in the top five of all-time, you know, creative IP, original IP. Because from the movie, the animated movie, to live-action movie, to the sequels, to the musical itself, the spinoffs on TV- To the sequels, to the musical itself, the spinoffs on TV, the merchandising alone. Like, the, the, the fact that The Lion King continues to stretch its brand. There's about to be a new Lion King film coming out this Christmas, Mufasa, The Lion King, yes. The, 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 the money, the, the, the iconicness of it. Lion King is thirty years old and we're still talking about it. It's still iconic. The, the, to me, this might be controversial, but I'm gonna say it. I personally think The Lion King is the greatest animated film of all time. I said it. Because of its impact. Its, its cultural impact, its, 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 its IP impact, nothing compares. Name any other animated film that has come close. Number two might be Toy Story. I'll give Toy Story that. I'll, I'll give Toy Story that. But Toy Story had a Broadway musical though. Exactly. I, I, I think Lion King is that for me. I think Lion King by far successfully has done things. That, that no, no other brand has done. The Lion King, easily. The IP on Lion King, thirty years, thirty years, thirty years. The relevance continues. Toy Story might be up there. I might, I'll put Toy Story number two. But I just feel like The Lion King, no- nothing tops The Lion King to me. Nothing tops Lion King. The cultural impact of The Lion King, the, 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 the success of it, the franchises. It's just, I, I, n- nothing touches The Lion King. So, Stan, Stan, moving along. Um, I went to a couple of good restaurants this week, uh, La Scala. Now, some of y'all gonna say La Scala. La Scala, as in La Scala heat, earnest at La Scala, explain. Yes, I went to La Scala, which is a local chain, um, that is very familiar to people. They, they, they got a location on Sixth and Chestnut and they have one, a new loc- a newer location at Thirty Second and Chestnut. Now, why I've gone there is because a lot of you all have just said to me that, you know, look, everybody can't go to a mission-style restaurant. I get it. And you all say to me, well, there's gotta be ways to eat out without breaking the bank. There are. There's lots of restaurants. And my taste in food, as you can see, I have the range. To be a really great food critic, a good food writer, expertise, expert, you, you have to have range. Something that Keith Lee doesn't have, oop shade, but you have to have range. And range means, and I always tell people this, that you can find incredible food at great prices and not have to break the bank. Now, sometimes you wanna break the bank. Sometimes you wanna splurge. But sometimes you don't want to. Sometimes you're looking for something that is in that range where you can still have a good time. And I feel like La Scala does that for me. I went to the thirty, uh, street, the Thirty Second Chestnut location. And it was great. It was good food, good food, no fuss, no fuss, easy eating. Um, it's, it's loose Italian, but it has a lot of great other, um, options that are Italian-inspired. Um, but, but, but Americana cuisine. There's something for everybody. There's a lot of picky people, people that don't do pork, don't do seafood. You just wanna cute casual date night or, or catching up with a good friend and you just wanna go somewhere that is not Chili's, right? Like, let's be very clear. Not Chili's, Applebee's level, like apparently Applebee's, Applebee's and T G F Fridays, right? Now, T G F Fridays is going, it just filed for bankruptcy, uh, this week, fun fact, or not so fun fact. Um, but you want something that is in that mid-level, and I'm not talking about mid as in food, but mid-tier. You don't want something like, okay, you don't wanna do lock bar steak forty-eight, Alpen Rose, a hive, right? You don't wanna do that, right? But you want something that is still good quality, but reasonably priced, right? And you want something that doesn't feel like you have to get too dressy. But you don't want something that feels raggedy and like hole in the wall, that is like not prim and proper, right? You know, a place that's gonna serve a cocktail in the proper cocktail glass. A place that's gonna replace your, your plates and your, and your silverware multiple times. A place that has proper lighting, a place that doesn't give you a smelly menu. You know what I mean? You know, that kinda place. Yeah, that's La Scala. That's La Scala, okay? That's White Dog Cafe. Th- that's places like that, right? So La Scala was great. I really enjoyed it there. I went to Happy Hour at Pearl and Mary, which I've been hearing about their Happy Hour for a while. The Happy Hour is every day and it's like from four to six. I love a four o'clock Happy Hour. We love a four o'clock Happy Hour. And that was great. They have a nice Happy Hour situation, you know, reasonably priced oysters. You know, it's the bar, I met up with a good homegirl and we had a really good time. Those chi- those Thai chili wings. Some of the best wings I've had in the city. I just wanna put that on the record. Some of the best wings I had was at Pearl and Mary's, shocking. Yes, they got the, the, the oysters and the seafood situation and the, and the, and, and the, um, scallop toast and all that, which was great. But those wings. It was the wings for me. Liked the wings, highly recommend it. So, yeah, that's my update. Uh, that's what's been going on with me. I'm excited about the gala this upcoming Saturday. Uh, my mom is coming in town. Cannot wait. We're gonna go out, we're gonna make it a nice family weekend. Um, of course, the gala's on our list. We're gonna do brunch on Sunday. We're going to go out. She's coming in on Friday. We're gonna do a really fun dinner on Friday night. And we're gonna have a nice little time. It's gonna be a nice family time. Um, so my mom is coming in town for the gala. It's become a thing now. Last year she came and this year she's coming for the fiftieth. And she really loves her time at the gala. Like, she really loves the, the P A B J gala. Like, that's one of her favorite spots. So, just wanna put that up the radar for you all, that there is fun to be had. So now, let's get into the election because that is clearly what we're all here for. That's what we wanna talk about. That's what I wanna talk about. You know, we're in the final hours, y'all. My closing arguments, my thoughts. And my analysis, because clearly, as you all have been seeing in the past couple of days, this past week. The backpedal has been real. And look, I'm, I'm okay. I'm gonna give you my predictions. If I'm wrong, we're gonna cry together, okay? But I, I refuse. I refuse to be wrong. I refuse to be wrong right now. I, I think I'm right. I'm gonna claim it. We're gonna speak this into existence. From, from my lips to your ears and to the ears of the above. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna be, we're gonna be optimistic and I don't wanna hear no other shit. Please don't tell me, please, please. Look, I'm never a positive vibes only guy, but I am right now. Leave me the fuck alone with your, I hope you're right. Leave me the fuck alone. I, I'm gonna be delusional in my, in my confidence and my, in my, in my optimism. I'm serious. I have no other choice. I have no other choice. I, I have no other choice, seriously. I don't care about you being worried. Please don't text me. Please don't. I'm, I'm dead ass. I'm serious. And I also wanna say this before I conclude, uh, but not conclude, before I, before I get into it actually. Uh, cuz we got a lot to talk about this week, uh, for this week's episode. If you have not done everything you could for this election, whether it was donating money, call a friend, tell people to register to vote. Get people's asses to the polls, get people to vote early, knock on doors, volunteer, then, then I really don't wanna hear anything. I don't. If you doom-screwed more than you actually got your ass out there and did the work. I don't wanna hear anything from you. If you just treat this like a regular degular situation where you got your nails done. You know, did your own work, made your money, and, and, and just say you hope the election's fine, then you got privilege to do it. Because there were people who really showed up, showed out and bust their ass to do everything they could to get. Vice President Kamala Harris to the finish line. If you was not one of those people who did work to do this, I, 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 I don't know what to tell you. I don't. You, you go by your nails somewhere, but, but don't come over here. Don't ask me what's next. Don't ask me anything. I am not, yeah, you, get, get, listen, the social para, the social per- you know, whatever they call it, social. Um, the parasocial relationships. Not, not, not now, not now, please. I am not your spirit animal. I am not your refuge. I'm a journalist, I'm a black man, I'm a queer person that's trying to survive in this world. If my work inspires you, informs you, wonderful. But, but, but please, knock off the parasocial relationships, for real, for real. Because honestly, now is not the time to go grab a black person and emotionally dump on them. Don't do it. Don't, don't text me, don't DM me on election night. Don't do it. One, I'm gonna be working. So I want you all to know this. If you wanna experience election experience with me in Philadelphia, from ten AM to one PM on W R D Radio. I'll be back on air hosting an election special, the Election Day Special, which I do every six months. Shout out to the Labor's District Council, the Labor's District Council. They sponsor our on-air three-hour Election Day Special on W R D Radio, okay? Ninety-six point one FM, nine hundred AM, Progressive Black Talk Media, W R D Radio. I will be doing the Election Day Special for three hours with the legendary Joanne Bell right there on W R D Radio. And you can hear me live. Now, you can stream it as well. You can also stream. This is gonna be on Tuesday morning, y'all. You can stream it on W R D, you can listen to it, um, but I'll be live on air. So that's why I gotta vote extra early, cuz I gotta get my ass down to the, uh, to the studio and do my thing. But I have another surprise for you all. If you are in Philadelphia, or again, you wanna stream, I will be live on TV. Yes, you heard that correctly. I will be on TV. Yours truly will be on TV, yes. The doll will be on TV. I will be on CBS Philadelphia. From eight PM to eleven PM on Tuesday night. Yes, you heard it here. I'm gonna be there. I'm gonna be covering. I'm gonna be doing an election analysis, analysis. I'm gonna be talking about the election. I'm gonna be giving all the details about how people can watch. So I'm gonna be on the CBS News app on your streaming device from eight PM to eleven PM that night on election night. Now, if you can go on the website, you can see it. I'm also gonna be on Paramount Plus on your local affiliate if you're on CBS. Now, if you're on Phil- Philly fifty-seven, now that's channel fifty-seven or Pluto TV. You can watch me on, um, Philly fifty-seven from eight PM to nine PM on, uh. On, um, Philly fifty-seven, channel fifty-seven. I'm gonna be on Pluto TV, um, from eight, um, PM to eleven PM, or you can see me as CBS. Now, I'll be on TV live on CBS News, Philadelphia's channel, for four minutes at the twenty-six. To fifty-six P, uh, fifty-six minute time slot. So if you watch me on TV, you're gonna catch me for eight minutes. So I'll be at the twenty-six, um, minute mark. Every hour and on the fifty-six, uh, minute mark per hour. So you'll catch me two times each hour on the local TV station, but on streaming, I'll be on the entire time. So you can catch a live Election Day coverage with me on there. Let me know if you're watching me, tag me, show love, but that'll be CBS Philadelphia, so shout out. It'll be myself, the legendary Yuki Washington, um, Natasha Brown and Don Bell. You'll have three-hour coverage of the election that night. So understand that if you're DMing me and texting me and sending me polls, I fucking know respectfully, please. This happens every election and people get in their feelings cuz they're like, oh, you didn't respond, ba, ba, ba. Sweetheart, I am going to be on TV. I'm telling you now. Listen to me carefully. I'm going to be on TV. So if you texting me or you're telling me, did you see this, did you see that? Baby, I am reporting the news. I am going to be reporting the news. So don't ask me, did I see this? I fucking saw it. Go tell somebody else respectfully. I am going to literally be on TV. So I will not be able to respond to your text messages, people. This happens every election cycle. People messaging me like, oh my God, did you see Wisconsin? Did you see this? Yes, yes, I saw it, cuz I'm the one on air telling everybody else. So, please, eat some, eat some snacks, drink a drink, take an edible legally. Um, do something, but I, I, I will not be able to respond to all the noise and all the chaos of Election Day. And if I don't respond to you, don't take it personal, take it professional, cuz I am getting a check. So I wanna put that out there, full disclaimer. Now, let's get into this election. She's gonna win. She's gonna win. I've been saying this for several weeks. I've been saying this for a minute, actually. I have believed from day one that Donald Trump is gonna lose this election. You all have been following this podcast for the entire duration of the Biden administration. And here we are today at this major point. Was I talking shit? Was I wrong? Did I have the information? You know, that's where I'm at. You know? It is, it is what it is. That is all I'm gonna say. We, 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 we are at this important inflection point in the election. There's no take-back seats. I said what I said. I think she's gonna win. I think she's gonna do really well. I think there's a chance that she's gonna surprise us. I think she's gonna get states that we didn't think she could get, or get very, 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 very close. We see you Iowa. There's a chance she might get Iowa at this point. We don't know. Anything can change, but she might end up getting Iowa. She could defend the blue wall. I think she's gonna defend the blue wall and she might get other things. She could get, potentially get North Carolina. She could get things that people didn't even expect her to get. Now, I'm not one of those people that thinks that Texas is at that play. But could Texas be, do well that maybe Ted Cruz loses Senate seat? Who knows? Who knows how Texas might show up? But Texas getting real, real bluish. Texas might get purplish. Who knows? Um, Pennsylvania is still on everybody's mind. You know, Philadelphia just has to show up and show out. And it's looking really good. Early voting looks really good in Philly. Now, there are a couple of you all that need to go check out your reg- registration. Have you voted mail-in? There is lots of, uh, there's a couple of hundreds of ballots that has been in error because they didn't either submit the information correctly or whatever the case is. Make sure you check to see that your, your ballot was received and it was approved and your stuff is correct. Because there are a couple of hundreds, um, that was not there. And I think it's important for everybody to be able to make sure, um, that they're able to get this. Because this is very important. Um, I've heard a lot of people talk about the ballots and, and their ballots, is their ballot correct? And, you know, I just want people to really make sure that. They take the time to really check the status if they, if they did the mail-in vote. Because there are a couple of conver- there's a couple of situations where there were, uh, some confusion around that. And I just wanna make sure that people on my end know. So for those of you who, who, who know your stuff is right, did it correctly, this isn't for you, but I wanna make sure that. I do get this word out because people have been trying to get the information and figure out, you know? Is their ballot stuff correct? You know, i- is everything okay? Um, you should have been notified, um, because some people may need to fix their mail-in ballots. Cuz so far, they're currently rejected. Now, here's what people need to know. A lot of people did vote early, which is good. But some people voted improperly. So according to the Philadelphia City, Philadelphia City Commissioners, many Philadelphians have sent in mail-in and absentee ballots. With various issues that may prevent them from being counted. Some of these issues at, are include no secrecy envelope, no signature, no date. There are apparently thirty-three hundred names of people. That are on a, on a list of voters whose ballots have issued, okay? Now, don't panic. A lot of these ballots, they said about roughly thirteen hundred of them, are listed as undeliverable. Uh, meaning returned by the US Postal Service. Now, this list is public, which means anybody can look at the list and you can make sure people don't sign their ballots. Um, you know, you can look at people, um, and check. So make sure you do that. Now, there is an update. Uh, um, somebody said that provisional ballots get counted last. So if they get counted at all and are on the better last, the better left of the last resort thing. Um, instead, if your name is on the list, go to a satellite election office to get it sorted. Those are open seven days a week. They'll probably let you know that you use a replacement ballot. So if you did have an issue, or you think there might be an issue. Go to a satellite election office. There's several across the state of Philadelphia to get it sorted out. And they will let you use a replacement ballot, which you might be able to do in person. So if you listen to this podcast right now, you can do that right now, right now, okay? But make sure you do it before Election Day. So, just wanna put that out there. But I think Philadelphia is going to save the day. I think a lot of, a lot of early voting in Philadelphia is doing well. I think we're gonna do better than what we did. In twenty twenty. I think that Philadelphia will really step up and show out. That is why there's been a lot of energy, because. That is why there's been a lot of energy, because honestly, Philadelphia is a tipping point. If Philadelphia does what needs to do, Pennsylvania will go blue and will stay blue. The county, the neighbor, the neighboring collar counties and suburbs will also be pivotal as well. That is why you saw Alicia Keys, Michael Ealy, Michelle Obama. Rumor has it potentially Taylor Swift. We don't know cuz, you know, as, you know, the final, you know, there'll be the final rally will be Monday night. As you all know, this podcast came out before then, the speculation that potentially Taylor Swift might make an appearance. We don't know if she's gonna perform, but might make an appearance. But John Legend has shown up, um, you know, Robert De Niro, Leonardo DiCaprio, all these people have come to Philadelphia, okay? So if they're coming like this, all this fanfare, all this celebrity attention, it is because of the fact that they recognize how serious Philly has to show up to the polls. Like, this is no joke. Philadelphia has to show up and it has to so, to show strong. So I think we will. I think we will rise to the occasion. I think she's gonna win. I really do. I think that across the momentum is in her favor, the, the social media investment and campaigning has outnumbered everybody. Democrats have been fundraising more than any, than, than the Republicans on social media. There's been more social media fundraising, um, camp, there's been more money put into social media campaigns by the Democrats than, than the Republicans. They're outnumbering them. They're outworking them. They're out hustling them on the ground game. The ground game is crazy. I mean, they're just working. They're busting their ass. This is probably been one of the best presidential campaigns in modern history. And I would even argue maybe better than Obama in oh-eight because of the fact of how quickly Harris had to turn this shit around. She had like ninety days, and the fact that she's been able to do this in ninety days and keep the momentum. Everybody's been talking about the momentum, the honeymoon phase. There ain't been no honeymoon phase. The entire campaign has kept the energy and momentum going. The campaign has been strategic. She has had no major fucking blunders. No October surprises that could have scared everybody. She has been doing her big one. If she does not win this election, let me be very clear. It is because of racism. It is because of sexism. And quite frankly, I don't trust anybody who does not look like me on November fifth. If she does not win this election this week, I am going to literally, I, I ain't gonna hold you. I'm gonna be looking at anybody who does not look like me. Funny, you gonna have to screenshot and show me your ballot. I'm gonna have to see the receipts. It's gonna be a proof to enter into my circle. I'm gonna wanna see the receipts. I'm gonna wanna see confirmation that you voted for her. Because see, let me tell you, with the Hillary situation, you know, some of y'all was getting cut off then, but, but I need proof. I'm gonna need some proof. Because with the way that this is looking, ain't no way she winning. Ain't, I mean, sorry, ain't no way she losing. Ain't no way she's not winning this election. I, I don't see, I, I, I really don't see it. I don't. I don't see it. I don't see the loss. I don't see it. It's too much money. It's too much energy. It's too much. This is bigger than Hillary. Okay, cuz there were people that felt like they were dragging their feet for Hillary. This is different. And to these progressives, it's up. Y'all radical, if, 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 if she does not win. To you all who made these moral arguments about how y'all can't vote, let me tell you right now, I'm done with you. I'm cutting you off. You can't sit with me. You can't sit with me. If she wins, we gonna have a conversation. Some of y'all, I'm gonna be like, y'all, don't, don't talk about democracy cuz you wasn't a part of saving. Go sit your ass down somewhere. If she comes close, I'm cutting you off cuz she don't deserve to come close. She don't deserve to come close. She, she, listen, if we're talking about sixteen Trump, I give it that. Sixteen Trump really did put in that muscle. He was with the bigotry and the bullshit, but that campaign was definitely working. This campaign is trash. This campaign is weak as hell. This man is weak. This campaign is weak. The money ain't there. I barely see the ads. The shit, the messaging is off. Like, it's just not good. The jokes, he ain't even funny anymore. I mean, people used to say Trump was funny. People. You know, people. But the jokes are not funny. He's not even making jokes anymore. There, there, there's no humor to him anymore. Um, there's no, there's no energy. It's just, it's desperation. It's, 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 he's talking from the sky. You know, for all the conversations about Biden and his stamina and his mental cognitiveness, Trump, what is Trump doing right now? I, I don't wanna hear it. I just, there, there's no chance. This man, this man is literally campaigning to lose. Like, I really believe Trump is campaigning to lose. The, the Madison Square Garden, the, the McDonald stunt, like, at this point, this man is prepared to lose. Okay, and I wanna reiterate that Trump does not care about this campaign at this point. Trump is at this point trying to figure out how he can try to hijack the election. Just like he tried and he failed in twenty twenty, he is trying to do it again. It's obvious that he's prepared to lose this election. So now he is going to try every stunt. Please do not be surprised if this man declares that he won on election night when that is not the case. Please be prepared for this man to act like he's, he's winning. He's already, the Republicans are already trying to throw out lawsuits, threatening lawsuits across the country. They're already trying to find a way to call flag on foul where there's no flag in foul. Like, this is the mindset that they have, okay? Now, I made a podcast appearance. On a podcast called Democracy in Color. If you have not heard about Democracy in Color, they have a podcast. I make a special guest appearance on that podcast, and I get to do a huge, special one-hour episode where I talk about the local races. I talk about the presidential race specifically. I talk about this year and campaigns. And it's a really great in-depth, very, very wonky, but fun, thoughtful, uh, episode. So if you have not heard of the podcast Democracy in Color, please listen to me do the real nerdy numerical analysis on that show. It's a really great one-hour special, and shout out to the people at Democracy in Color for having me on to talk about, um, all eyes on Pennsylvania. That is the name of the episode. So check that out if you wanna just have some really great, smart, wise election coverage from yours truly. I wanna be very clear that the Trump campaign has really been a shit show. They've been relying on a lot of bigotry, fear mongering, a lot of, a lot of just misinformation, disinformation um, to try to get the vote out. I've been watching Trump rallies. I haven't gone to any physically, but I have watched them. Y'all, the crowds are not as big. Vice President Harris was at the Eclipse or the Ellipse, I think it's called the Ellipse, um, and the nation's capital. Which was the area where the January sixth insurrection took place. And our powerful speech that was expected to have twenty thousand people. Then they prepared for, you know, forty thousand people, and then they got over seventy thousand people. This is, this election, this, this election is no joke. Harris is getting gains with independents who look like they're gonna decide this election. She's doing things that has just not been done. The momentum is there. The enthusiasm is there. I just don't see her losing. I think this is gonna be a big ass whooping. I keep seeing the number three hundred and ten, but she might do more than three hundred electoral votes. I want her to beat this man's ass in the polls so bad that we don't give a fuck about provisional ballots. We don't care about the last-minute vote counts. It won't even fucking matter. She would have done so damn good that really we don't even need to deal with all the Election Day lawsuits and shit. It doesn't fucking matter. And let me be very clear with you all, and I wanna reiterate this for the umpteen time. When people talk to you all about election theft and, 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 and stop the steal and, and voter fraud, let me tell y'all this. Whether it's the Supreme Court or the municipal courts or whatever court in this country, there is a high level of, of reasonable certainty and probability and legal protection and, and, and proof that you have to have to make a case like that. Election fraud is so rare, so unprofound in presidential elections that no one who fights these cases really win them to a change the outcome of the election. It does not happen. Okay, it does not. So please, tell people that there is a very strong and nearly certain op case that whatever the hell the election results are, are gonna be final. There will be no election theft. There will be none of that, right? There can be voter intimidation, right? There can be issues, and if there is a case like that, please contact your local district attorney's office. Please contact the state, the Secretary of State of your, of your, of your Commonwealth or state. Like, the, the Secretary of State handles those issues. Your Attorney General in your city handles those issues. So contact them if there's some voter intimidation at your voting location, okay? Like, that's what they handle the day of. Let's be very clear. There is a lot of that, but voter fraud, all of that, that's conspiracy talk, and it doesn't have strong grounds. And I'm gonna tell this one more time to people who are Trump supporters. In states like Pennsylvania, where voters vote very mixed, they don't vote straight down blue ticket. If, we all got one ballot, and if you vote for the president, you vote for the president. But you vote for other people. You vote for congresspeople. You vote for senators. You vote for everybody else. If they vote, if a, if a Republican or somebody votes for Trump and votes for other people, right? Or don't vote. They might vote for Harris, but don't vote for Trump, but vote for other Republicans. If, are you trying to tell me that those Republican votes are, are fraudulent as well? Be careful. Be careful. Now, people have not talked about the other ballot down races. You know, uh, there is a big senate race, right? Bob Casey is going against a man named Dave, uh, uh, McCormick. People say it's a tight race. I think Bob Casey might be able to pull it out. There's also a Attorney General's race against, it's Eugene De Pasquale, who's a Democrat going against Dave Sunday. That's a race to watch. People don't know how that's gonna play out. People think that there's a strong chance that the Democrat will win, but we'll see. The treasurer's race is very interesting. It's two Republicans against each other. There, I mean, I mean, Republican versus Democrat. There's a woman, uh, Democrat named Erin McLeanan, I believe, going against, uh, a Republican. People are suggest, people think that she could potentially lose. She did not get the endorsement of the governor, the Democratic nominee did not, because she spoke critically about Josh Shapiro, so he did not endorse her, her race for treasurer. There's also the Attorney General's race, which is the one that everyone's talking about. Um, not the Attorney General, uh, the Auditor General's race. That is Democrat Malcolm Kenyatta against incumbent Republican Timothy De Forre. It should be noted that these two candidates are both black men. Um, people are predicting that this is gonna be a tight race because a lot of people do think that Timothy De Forre, the Republican who is, who was the first black candidate in Pennsylvania to ever win a statewide race, ever. He was a Republican. He's not a Trumper. He's going against Malcolm Kenyatta, who was a perennial candidate who previously ran for Senator, and also was currently on the ballot for state rep. He's also currently running for auditor general. I would just say that is gonna be interesting race to watch. I don't think Malcolm's gonna win, in my opinion. But I could be wrong. If there's enough Harris support, if there's no, if the drop down is not that low. If a lot of momentum is in favor of Harris and the Democratic ticket, could that be enough to give him the boost to win the statewide race? Po- possibly. But he might also still lose because there are a lot of Democrats I know who don't feel like he has the experience for the role and say they're not gonna vote for him. They're gonna vote for the black guy. We'll see. But if he does win, he will make history as the first openly LGBTQ candidate to ever win a statewide race in Pennsylvania history. And one of the few in the country. So this is a big damn deal. This is a big damn deal. So all eyes is gonna be on that race as well. And then there's some congressional races and seats as well. We'll see how that plays out. Um, as far as, uh, congressional races and senate races across the country, it's a toss-up. A lot of people don't know, will the Democrats take back the House, keep the Senate and take back the House? Up in the air. Will Republicans lose the White House but keep the, the, the white, the Congress, Congress or take back the Senate, but then let the, let the Democrats take back the Congress? We'll see. Congressional control is going to be very interesting to watch. How beautiful would it be to see the Democrats take everything? Wouldn't that be fun? We have a, oh, because if that happens, if Harris takes back Congress and the Senate and, and she gets the White House, a lot of policy is about to go down in the next two years, up into midterms. And we've seen this happen with Obama in oh-eight, where he was able to get the House and the Senate and, and get Democrats to have the lead. And Obamacare was able to get passed. That might be able to happen. We might be able to get that, who knows? But this makes sure that when you vote, there's no drop-off, meaning that don't just vote for president, vote down, vote down the ballot. So we'll see, but I'm optimistic. I'm optimistic. We'll see how it plays out. So before I move on, um, this presidential media tour, these campaigns, the backpedal has been real. I've been telling you all this, but it's been even more real. Um, for starters, let's get into the fact that let's get into the fact that now they wanna have a conversation. Mainstream media wants to have a conversation about white women voters. New York Times Magazine, Nicole Hannah Jones, who is a prolific writer, right, journalist and her right, has this big feature in the magazine this weekend, this past weekend, talking about white women voters and history of white women voters. I, I, why are we talking about white women now? We should have been talking about white women voters. There should have been more coverage. We spent all these, this time talking about the black male vote, and guess what? Now outlets like Washington Post and others are saying that that was an illusion, that Trump's appeal to black voters and this, this lead he might have had or whatever was all an illusion, and that there's polls coming out now that shows double-digit, wide-sweeping gains that Harris has gotten in recent weeks, um, following Trump's campaign meltdown. I don't believe that, y'all. I don't think he never really had it, but now people are trying to cover their ass and note that there are huge, like Harris is making tremendous gains with black male voters and that, you know, other communities of color are beginning to support her, and that now Latino voters are, are coming in favor of her following his defamatory remarks about the Puerto Rican community at his, you know, Madison Square Garden, that, that the antisemitism and the and the racism has gone too far, and that now people are, voters of color are, are, are voting for Harris now. Fuck outta here. Now, Latino voters, mainly. Because, you know, the comedian they had on, on that stage referring to the island of Puerto Rico, which is a U S territory, as a pile of garbage, right? Like, that was bullshit. That was racist, right? We know that. But let's be clear, carving watermelons, references to carving watermelons, this type of racist rhetoric that was not the straw that broke the camel's back for black voters. I'm sorry, like, are we not acting like Trump ain't been said problematic shit? I just, I just can't with the, the, the sudden backpedal. The logic is just not making sense to me, a- and I'm getting really tired. You know, I'm, 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 yeah. Yeah, I'm getting tired of the backpedal. I'm getting tired of everyone moving the goalposts when it comes to these conversations. At some point, you gotta look in the mirror and you gotta acknowledge The current state of of this election, how it's been. I I don't believe in good conscience and good faith. That all of a sudden, we woke up and, you know, and we woke up and this is what happened. I I don't in good faith believe that. I don't. So, to everybody who's trying to act like all of a sudden gains were made. Blah 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 blah. Yeah, okay. She been had it. She been, she been had it. Okay? She been had it. And I won't accept any other answer than that. She been had it. And we we at a certain point, gotta. I I just hope that when this election is over, we never again allow the media to keep this narrative. Referring to us as, you know. What about black male voters? Stop it. The conversation is always gonna be white voters. Whether white male or white women, white voters should be the conversation. They will be the ones. That will truly determine the outcome of the election. We cannot keep letting there be this guaranteed acknowledgement of like. Oh, well, of course Trump's gonna get white male voters. Uh, that's not guaranteed. He he shouldn't be getting white women. You know, we've seen Obama do miracles, and I think that Kamala will do, will do, make strides with certain, um. Groups of white voters, you know, independents, you know, certain groups. I I can see other opportunities here. So, I just want people to not fall for the okey doke. And and let that be the narrative, okay? Capisce? Capisce. Okay? Just, just saying. Like, we're killing this after November fifth. Like, I just want y'all to stop blaming black voters. Don't, don't talk about black men. Keep our names out of your mouth. Don't talk about black women. Like, just don't talk about black voters, because I know these numbers are gonna show ridiculous strides. And and for all of the CNN, MSNBC, all this coverage. A lot of people are gonna be eating crow in the media about how they mismanage these narratives. Just saying. I'm I'm ready for it. White women, you better hope you're over fifty percent this time. You better hope you do higher. Cause if the numbers are neck and neck and we're biting nails again, white women, I'm just, I, that's gonna be the conversation. That's gonna be a conversation for the next four years. That better be the article, that better be the first major argument. If I see a black male voting, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell any news outlet, I'm I'm gonna say, uh, why are we talking about us? Cause we're not the ones, baby. We're not the ones. We're not the reason. And that just needs to be very, very clear. My closing argument, before we move on into other news. I really think she's gonna win. I really think that everything I've seen, she's gonna win. And that's my thoughts. That's my thoughts. Period. Okay, one more thing, one more thing, cause I do wanna say this. I got a piece coming out of Philadelphia Magazine, um, online. You all will read it. It's coming out very, very soon, very quickly. That's coming out the day before the election, because I want y'all to be able to process this and and read this. Because I'm already thinking about the day after Election Day, right, November sixth. Cause it's time, right? At this point, I'm ready to, I'm ready to talk about this. There's been a lot of momentum. There's been a lot of talk. There's been a lot of energy. There's been a lot of momentum about, you know, getting people out. A lot of folks have went to black owned barber shops, they went to small businesses, communities and everything else. I've seen a lot of local Democratic elected officials show up in neighborhoods and communities that they don't show up to enough. And while I find it inspiring and it's great and it's wonderful to see folks coming out, I just wanna be very clear. And I wanna say this for the record. That while I know that the level of rallies, celebrities and energy. The money that was pumped into these last couple of weeks in Philadelphia cannot be replicated any other time. I do believe that we can duplicate some of the outreach efforts on a regular basis in these communities. That go beyond this presidential election. Because as somebody who's covered twenty sixteen, twenty twenty and twenty twenty four, I am sick of it personally. That all of a sudden, state reps, state senators, city council people. Folks can make time to visit these communities and encourage them to vote and encourage them to care about these issues. It is bigger than a presidential race. It should be bigger. You all got elected to serve three sixty five. And that needs to be the case. And so, it's a shame that all of a sudden, that. Vice President Harris has gone to more black barber shops than some of you city council people in your own districts. It is a shame that there's been more appearances from the mayor. During this period of time in some of these neglected neighborhoods than was prior to her last time when she ran, when she first ran for mayor. Like, the neglect is is real. Some of these state reps in your district, you have not shown up this much on the streets in the pavement like this. Since she last ran two years ago. At some point, we have to not make this, this needs to be regular. There needs to be barber shop conversations. And and investment in the community. There needs to be more small business support and promotion and investment with vendors. And local vendors on a regular basis from the Democratic Party in our city. Because if you did that, you wouldn't have to be, keep talking about democracies on the line. Because people wouldn't have to question why do their vote matter or why should they even vote to begin with. I'm not saying this election is important. This is a very consequential election, but damn it, I'm sick of consequential elections every four years. Part of the reason why these elections are so consequential is because you all come to these black neighborhoods. Every four years and sing the same song, and you don't deliver on promises, you don't check up on people. You you gotta maintain power. And how you maintain power is by consistently being engaged. So I get it. You may not be able to get Michael E. Lee, or 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 Alicia Keys, or or Kerry Washington, or these people to come. I get that. But you know what? Maybe you could get, I don't know, Tierra Whack more often? Maybe you could get, you know, Trina or more people to show up a little bit more voter stuff. I mean, y'all, y'all have these budgets. You know, you could bring a couple of B and C listed artists, you know, around. It just needs to just be more. And there's enough resources and money in this damn city. That we could do a lot more to get people to care. Getting people registered to vote, okay, should should have been happening. So, I just wanted to say that. And I'm gonna talk more about that in my piece. But I'm really excited, because now it's time for the experts and the journalists to come in. Now it's time for us to walk into the room. Now you can turn off these nuts and these crazy conspira, now it's time. For the experts to walk in the room. My, one of my biggest days in election coverage is on Election Day itself. I don't get used throughout the time, because they let the idiots and all these analysis people, all these, it it wrong, loud and wrong folks come. Now it's time for people like me to now get the opportunity to provide clarity and insight, and it and and it's long overdue. And so, on Election Day, you can find me on, in the print, you can find me on the radio, you can find me on TV, you can find me on the websites. You can find me streaming. It is time for the pros to enter the room. Step aside, flunkeys. It's time for the pros and the professionals to enter the room. So that's my thoughts on that. Now, this week in City Council. Something very interesting happened. And I wanna unpack this, because a lot of y'all were asking me, what's going on in City Council? So, the Chinatown Arena, this seventy sixth arena proposal, the resolution. For it to be voted on, not the vote, but the the resolution to present it for discussion. Was voted in this past Thursday. To be clear, this is not the vote to vote on it to actually happen. This is the vote to determine whether or not it is actually on the, on the table to be voted on, which it is. It got passed. However, we're starting to see some wrinkles in the, in the alliances. For and against the arena. Now, as previously reported on Earnestly Speaking. I had talked about how the current people that has been out against the arena. Was Councilmember Jeffrey Young and Councilmembers at Large Nicholas Orwork. And Kendra Brooks from the Working Families Party. One Democrat and two Working Family Party at Large members on council. Now, you know, there's seventeen votes on council. And that means that there needs to be nine votes. For the arena to pass at City Council. Now, there's a part of me that thinks, right now, that the arena will pass. I know that a lot of you all don't wanna hear that. You feel like, damn, ugh. But I'm just looking at the vote count right now, and I don't see. The possibility of it passing, of it not passing right now, based on the voter count. However. The, the public comment, there, the the Chinatown Arena protesters. Um, made a point to talk about how the current resolution that was being brought and proposed. By Councilmember Mark Squilla. Who is the council member who oversees the city, the city, the, um, the Central City District. That encompasses the neighborhood, Chinatown and whatnot. You know, councilman prerogative allows him to, you know, kind of, you know, present that. They made some good points. And the points they brought up was this basically, that they don't think that the Chinatown Arena, the seventies arena right now. Is an actual proposal, that is in fact a concept of a plan, not a real plan, but a concept of a plan. Sounds familiar? The concept of a plan does not, it's not a good thing. It does not signal assurance. And and they're, they're saying that even if you wanted to have the arena. That the current plan is not sufficient, that there's more questions than answers. That even the deal's being brought up, fifty million dollars to community. Well, where is that money gonna go to? Who's it gonna go to? What communities are gonna get it? How are you gonna make this distinction? There's a lot of questions that have not been answered. And some people are beginning to be cynical and fed up about it. So I've noticed this, you know, I've I've noticed this even in my own work. I've noticed that there's been. A lot of legitimate concerns about the nature of this arena. And and I just feel like, okay, let's say you support the arena. Can you honestly say that the plan and the deal on the table is really effective and it really makes sense? There's just no way in good conscience you can say that. So, for those reasons, when it was time for the vote, they called the vote. And something interesting happened. Jeffrey Young said no, which we knew he was going to. Kendra Brooks said no, as we knew she would. Nicholas Orwork said no, as we knew he would. But Rue Landau said no. Yes, Councilmember at Large Rue Landau voted no. Her reasoning was because she did not feel like the information was sufficient, and she could not in good conscience. Vote for a resolution that just was, did not have enough clarity and certainty. And a plan, a strong enough plan, given the weight of the issues that were raised. Jamie Gattia also voted no. Her reasoning was the same reason similar to Rue, but she wanted to clarify. That her vote did not mean that she was gonna go a vote against the arena in in total. She says, if there was a plan and a resolution that was more revised and 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 definitely made sure to protect the Chinatown Arena. I mean, I'm sorry, protect Chinatown and to maintain a deal that was reasonable for Philadelphians, that in good conscience. You know, she might consider it, but as of right now, it's a no. So, so far, we have five members on council. Now, why is this a big deal? Because if five do not already support the resolution as it currently is presented, that's gonna force them to make some changes. Mark's gonna have to really adjust and adapt to rule them over. But also, it raises a question of whether or not other people might follow suit. Because will they ever arrive at a reasonable adjustment to that plan? That will not only change the minds of the people that voted nay, but also be able to. Give certainty to those who are still on the fence. Speaking of being on the fence, one person that comes to mind is Councilmember at Large Isaiah Thomas. Now, people have seen him as a progressive, but he has been really kind of up in the air with this. No one knows his decision. He clarified that he voted in favor of the resolution, because he says he wanted to be on the ground. So people can vote, but he said he did not want people to confuse that as being in support of the resolution overall. Personally, I don't know why he just couldn't stick with his colleagues, his progressive colleagues like Rue and and and. You know, Nicholas and Kendra, and and and, you know, Jeffrey Young is not necessarily a progressive, but why not, you know, in good faith. Align yourself with them on this and and really demand that more needs to be done in this resolution. He didn't do that. He kinda took. In my way, a a cheap shot out of that, oh, a cheap way out, in my opinion. Like, he, he was like, you know, but he's. Always have struggled with picking a side. Like, he wants to be the person that makes everybody happy. You know, and unless there is some real fire to his ass politically that forces him to, he will always kind of straddle the fence. And that has been his biggest weakness. And it's surprising some folks, because the Chinatown Arena situation just feels like a non-negotiable. For anyone in this progressive space. I mean, hell, the public itself does not even want this damn Chinatown Arena. The only thing that's driving interest is the mayor and the unions. I mean, the unions, but we shouldn't sleep on the unions, because the unions have a lot of power and influence in town. But there are people who are gonna make this decision. So if I look at this current roster of other council members, right? I think that Curtis Jones is gonna vote in favor of it, because his wife works for the administration. She's one of the city reps. Of course she's gonna, he's gonna support it. Another person that I think will is Catherine Gilmore Richardson. I think she's gonna support it. Because she doesn't wanna look like she's anti-union and do, you know, she's gonna support what the unions want. Jim Harity is gonna do the same thing. Councilmember large Jim Harity is gonna do the same thing. Cindy Bass is gonna do the same thing. I think, you know, people like Katty Lizada is gonna do it. Anthony Phillips is gonna do it. They're gonna support the arena. And I don't think it's because all of them thinks it's a good idea. I just think that they might struggle. You know, um, with the fact that unions might not give them the same political support or money they need for their elections. You know, I wish it was at a time in politics where politicians didn't appear to be looked as as being bought. I wish that they could make decisions that just made sense for the greater good and not care so much about individual groups and bases of people. Because I promise you, that if they blindfolded those individuals and told them to vote. I believe that there will be enough votes that would have went against the arena. But because people in this, in politics make decisions based on their wallets and based on that, and don't have the courage to take a moral stand often. Then oftentimes, they will support things like this that will historically be a pain in the ass in the years and future to come. I mean, if you're gonna run for office, you gotta run for to make decisions. Period. Period. You you you're gonna have to make decisions. And sometimes. It's not gonna be always popular or trendy or the thing that everybody wants, but sometimes, it's the right thing to do. You know, one person that stood out to me that was not there was Nina Ma. Nina Ma was not present. At, uh, Nina Ma was not present at the. The vote, to take the vote. And Nina Ma is a big deal, because she's South Asian. You know, she has had support from the Asian community. It's gonna be very interesting to see how she votes on this. In my opinion, I think there's a possibility that the vote will be split between ten to seven. There's a possibility. That seven people will vote no, and ten people vote yes. They'll get the arena, but will be ma, but 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 will be major about this is. Seeing the fact that City Council will be very split. This will be, I predict, the most divisive vote and split in recent City Council memory. I don't think I've seen a vote as split as this, but it's looking like it's gonna be a split ass vote. That it might be a nail biter. They're gonna, they're gonna win. I think they're gonna get the arena. I think they're gonna get the. That it might be a nail biter. They're gonna, they're gonna win. I think they're gonna get the arena. I think they're gonna get the arena. But if the votes are seven to ten or shit, potentially eight to nine. That's not good. That's not good. That's not good. In a perfect world, I don't think the Chinatown Arena works. I don't think council would vote for it if they didn't feel the pressure from labor. But because it's a very labor town, I think that that is why some people are making this decision. Because every week when you go into council and you see those Chinatown protesters, get up on that mic. And get honest about how they feel like their voice isn't heard. It's hard to change that. I'm just thinking about all the impact, all the impact, all the people who are gonna be impacted by this decision. I'm just. Factoring all that in, like this is, this is a big damn deal. And I don't think a lot of people taking the time to really process this. There's gonna be a lot, this city is gonna change in such a very rapid way. We'll see. We'll see how it plays out. So that brings me to this week's Ask Ernest. You all have been looking at my social media, follow my posts. And I've been talking a lot about one trend in my current thinking. And it's shaped my leadership lately, but just been talking to people about this and this has been a concept and idea I've been thinking about. Recently, I was just talking to um, a fellow board member in an organization I'm a part of. And I was just talking about the direction of our organization, how we want to be viewed. And I've said for a while that I want us to be taken seriously. And in talking about that, I said that sometimes in, in most of the time when you wanna be taken seriously, you're not gonna be liked by everybody. And that there are people who are looking to be, there are people that seek, that are being, that, that seek to be taken seriously. And there's people that wanna be liked by everybody. That's a big important thing to consider, right? What does it mean to be taken seriously, right? In my opinion, it means that people know not the fuck with you. People recognize that when you say something the first time, that that's it. It means that they're not gonna double cross you. They're not gonna try to cross your boundaries. They're not going to assume that you're someone to play with. There's gonna be a level of respect and maybe some of that respect might come from fear. But there's a level where people understand. And honor and acknowledge. Your, the sincerity of your actions. And that is a powerful thing. And then there's this idea of being liked by everybody. People who just admire you. Everybody speaks highly of you. No one disagrees with you. Everybody just. Fathoms and, and flatters and, you know, everyone just goes up for you, right? And there's a lot of people that want this type of adoration, that they want people to like them, they want everyone to like them, they wanna. They don't want people, they don't want people mad, they don't want to disappoint people. And in the pursuit of that. I believe that people like that don't get taken seriously. That the folks that are so pressed for everybody to like them often don't get taken seriously. And I think about parts of my life and my journey, that I went through phases where I felt like I had to prove people wrong. And I wanted people to like me and I wanted, I didn't want people to disagree. I didn't even wanna say anything negative about me. And I just really wanted people to like me and I just really wanted everyone, for the most people to like me. And in the, in the pursuit of that, when I started to gain that level of popularity with folks. I recognized that people would, 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 would cross my boundaries. That people thought that it was okay to show up to my shit late. They thought that it was okay to cancel plans at the last minute. They just thought it was okay to just, you know, do whatever, say whatever around me without having to check themselves. And for those reasons alone, it became clear to me that people were not taking me seriously. Was I liked? Was I, you know, fa, a favorite? You know, it was up in the air. But it's very important. That people understand that this is bigger than that. This is different than that. And it's important that when we go about our way, we go on our journey. That we re, we recognize the importance of that, of that. Because if we don't, these are the situations that happen. So. Yeah, i- it's, it's. It's important. It's important, it's important, it's important because being taken seriously to me means more than anything. Because let me tell you this about being taken seriously. When people take you seriously, you're gonna get people to actually like you enough to take you seriously. And there's gonna be some people that don't like you, but take you the fuck seriously. But you know what's not missing in that situation? A level of respect. And I think that that's important. And so if you are a leader on a team, if you are somebody running an organization. If you're somebody that just is out here. Strive to be taken seriously. Because if people don't take you seriously, you can be liked. But people don't take you seriously, are you actually gonna get any things you want done? Are you gonna be achieving anything that you want? I have been in situations where there have been folks that have just, you know. Not care much for me and my style or whatever, but when I said something, oh, they took it seriously. And they acted accordingly. And I've realized through time that I'd rather be taken seriously. Than be liked by everybody. And I just wanna give that message out to people. I think about certain leaders, like right now, I think about Vice President Harris who's running for president. She wanted to be taken seriously her entire political career. If you look at the history of this woman, her political career. And how she's been able to achieve so many historic firsts. We're looking at the possibility, y'all, of having the first woman president. And that the first woman president is gonna be a black woman, just like the first woman president. And for the, I mean, fir, first woman mayor was a black woman. Black women specifically, when I think about my mom, when I think about mentors in my life. Every black woman I have respected, I know, the one trait about all of them was that they always wanted to be taken seriously. They wanted you to pay attention, to listen carefully. They, they, they wanted that. And I think that, that Kamala Harris embodies that mindset. That for black women specifically, a lot of them want to be taken seriously. They want you to listen to what they're saying. They want you to understand. They want you to pick up what they're putting down. That to be taken seriously meant more to them than anything else. I remember the saying, a slogan my mom used to always say around people, you don't gotta like me, but you will respect me. Like, respect meant something, right? That that theme meant something more and it means, it resonates with me so much right now and just my professional journey in life. That as I've navigated through situations, I've realized that that has been the motif of me. That like in rec, in retrospect, I've always wanted respect because as a black queer person in this society. People will be in my, play in my face all day. Ooh, you're fabulous. Ooh, you give me life. All that shit, right? But then, when I wanted to be in the room, have a seat at the table, be given a position of influence and power. Oh, no. No, 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 no. They, no, 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 no. That was not taken. I wasn't taken seriously. Right? Like, oh, 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 yeah, you fun, you cute, we like you, hee hee. But they didn't wanna put me in those positions though. And so I realized very quickly as I navigate my work and this work, I wanna be taken seriously. If I'm liked, if I'm loved, if I'm whatever, cool. But I wanna be taken seriously. And that is something I'm gonna think about a lot. And I think it, it's just on me now. Deep thinking, meta, meta. Take it, take it, y'all. But I think that is the theme of where we are in this world. Too much has been fixated on likes and reshares and popularity and. Does everybody agree and all this bullshit? We've been looking at this wrong. And maybe that was the Obama era, right? Popularity, having swag, everybody liking you, everybody wanna rock with you. We're in a different era now. We're in the era of it's time to be serious. It's time to be for real. Playtime is over. We've been playing too much. We've been playing too much on TikTok. We've been playing in people's face too much. We've just been playing too much. And now it's time for us to be a little serious. Because however this election outcome plays out, we know that the days ahead is not gonna be easy. For a woman in office. We know that even though she's won, it's gonna be a lot of sexism, a lot of misogynoir. A lot of racism. It's gonna be a lot of that coming to her regardless. And we've worked too hard. They told us that Obama was gonna be the last black president we was gonna have. And Harris said, hold my beer. So, we have been able to get back to a place where we can see another black person. Another person of color in this seat. They said we couldn't do it, but we're gonna do it again. But we gotta now make sure. That we take her seriously and we take this seriously, that we keep the, we keep the process going so that she's not the first woman. She's not just the first woman, that she's not the last woman. That she's not the la, she's not just the first woman and she's not the last woman. She said this. She's always wants to be the first, but not the last. We gotta do this so well that, that they will never question. The likelihood of a woman being elected. This time around, they didn't question the likelihood that a black candidate could win. They questioned if a black woman could win. And now we gotta shut that down because if a black man, a black woman could win the White House, anybody could win this White House. There is a possibility model that is being created right now. And we gotta see through it. So enough with the games. Let's be serious again. Let's be serious again. Let's take this seriously. Let's, let's take what we do seriously. Let's put some respect on my name, our name, your name and other people's names. Let's take this shit seriously. Let's take Donald Trump seriously with this shit that he's talking about. It's a time to be serious and this is the time to be serious. So that's my thoughts. That's my thoughts on that. Now, to movies, I saw the Meg Thee Stallion documentary. I watched it. In her words. It was compelling. It was thoughtful. We knew this already. I did walk away not liking some people again. LeBron James. I'm a little disappointed. LeBron James has been a disappointment for me. Now, he's on the right side of history, supporting Harris for president. But I'm just disappointed with him. Like, I just, I, listen, you're gonna see the documentary, you're gonna find out why, okay? All of these black men ganging up on this black woman. I think about. Him, Joe Budden. I'm reminded by Joe Budden is trash yet again. But the way that certain black men in the culture, I mean, we knew DJ Akademiks was trash, but the way that they piled up on her. Unacceptable. Drake. Been a problem, right? I watched that. I reminded these men were trash. And of course Nikki, huh, of course Nikki Minaj. But the documentary showed me why those men specifically were trash. So, yeah, I wanna say that. Um, you know, a lot of people are shocked that she said she hooked up with Tory Lanez a couple of times. Which on, on drunken nights apparently, um. Why y'all surprised? Did y'all not follow the trial? She already admitted that she said this. Now, she lied on the Gayle King interview. Cause she didn't feel like it was necessary to share that she had a sexual relationship with Tory Lanez, you know, she thought it was irrelevant. But at the same time, this has already been hashed out during the trial. So for some people that's acting like, oh, she's finally admitting it. You all clearly was not following the trial. Just wanted to say that. You know, there's been a lot of talk about the hip hop blogs. She has announced this past week that she's suing um, a blogger named Milano. Um, Graham's I believe her name is or something like that. Um, for defamation, assassination of character, misinformation, all of the things. Um, I hope that, that she wins her suit. I think that, that she's gonna win that lawsuit. I think Meg Thee Stallion has enough evidence. And she's been telling these bloggers to stop lying on her and to stop slandering her. And this woman did all this for Tory Lanez and Tory Lanez, baby, don't see you, honey. He don't see you, boo boo. And now you did all this for this man, who was probably gonna still stay in jail despite trying to. You know, claim he's innocent. The man did it, okay? He shot the woman. And that, that, and we need to stop all of this, 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 this bullshit. So, let's just, let's stop. Now, I say all this to say that while I appreciate the documentary. I really want Meg Thee Stallion to move on. I'm not saying, don't ever forget this and move on from the situation. I'm saying that I just want her career, I want her to really after this fiasco. After all the, this discussion, I just want her career to evolve and I just want us. As fans and people that wanna support her and see her win, I just really want. This has been what, four years of this? I'm not saying like, don't ever forget it, move on with your life, whatever. I'm just saying that the fixation on this chapter of her life. I just personally would not like it to dominate her entire story. I think about Rihanna and how the Chris Brown, the, the Chris Brown assault. How that was a moment in her life and she went through and she talked about it. But we don't talk about that anymore when it comes to her. When it comes to Chris Brown. We do talk about Rihanna to a certain extent, his abuse, but we talk about his, his legacy of violence, right? And we know that. But I, I'm just happy that Rihanna, her legacy and her cultural impact and her presence, that that is not. The thing that we talk about when thinking of her. Like, when we, I think of Rihanna, I don't think of Chris Brown. I mean, this, that incident happened fifteen years ago. Rihanna has since made history, has done so much more since then. That was one part of her career. And you know, Tina Turner talks about this, you know, the late great Tina Turner talked about in her documentary, how, you know. The, so discussing the abuses of Ike Turner, that while that was a part of her life. That she did struggle with the fact that that became the narrative that defined her career to a certain extent. That Tina Turner and Ike Turner or the abuse that she experienced, that that took up a lot and she was ready to move on. And so I think about a lot of women in music who've had abusive careers, you know, experienced abuse in their, in their career and their life. How, why they don't, sometimes they don't wanna share those experiences because they don't want them to be the definitive aspect of their entire career. And so, there are a lot of women who hide about domestic violence and. In silence because they don't want it to be the thing that defines them. And so, I just hope that we as a society and as a fan base. And even Meg, we don't let this be the thing that defines her experience in her life and her career. Um, so I say that. Also, um, in other documentaries, the Martha documentary has come out on Netflix. Um, I enjoyed it. I thought it was good. Um, it is a very thorough, very intriguing documentary about Martha Stewart. You see all aspects of her life. Um, I think it's very timely. I think that is good that it's out now compared to previous years when there were other issues happening. She does not like the ending of the documentary. She's very nitpicky about the narrative around it. She doesn't want people to think that she's this old woman who is lonely. Um, you know, she doesn't like that about, being said about her. I can understand that. Um, she really, really hates the documentary for those last scenes. I did not read it that way per se. Um, I think that there is, you know, some people who do, who, who obsess over documentaries, they really wanna create a certain narrative about themselves. I get that, but at the end of the day, a documentary does have an, an introspection. That sometimes the person can't see about themselves. And I do think that while maybe she doesn't want people to think that she's this lonely lady, you know, I get that. There is a a element though where Martha has accumulated a level of wealth and fame. That in certain sense that the way that she is isolating herself from certain people. There is an element of it that isn't, you know, family centric, that isn't. Centric to a family base that. Some folks have been used to in their lives. And while she claims it's a sense of, uh. You know, independence and all of that, that's great, but you know, it is an observation. That's notable. Just about. And then lastly, I wanna talk about Wicked. Wicked screeners have gone out, it is coming out this November, November twenty second. The same day as Gladiator two. Y'all. It's good, it's great, it is a great musical, you know, I was very critical about music film adaptations and I must say. That this wicked musical, now this is part one. So for those of you all who wanna see certain songs and say, well, what about this, this is part one of the musical. They've decided to break this up into parts, part one is coming out this year and then next year, part two is coming out. So, yeah, they decided to put it in parts, like, kinda like the way that Harry Potter was done. Um, that's a bold choice. But I guess they really do believe there is enough wicked to go around. I I I mean, will there be enough bandwidth for people's attention to wanna see this movie? The part one of it now and then go back and see it next year, will we, will we care? I mean, I think so, but it's gonna be very big on how people. Receive and engage with the first one and I will say part one is fire. Cynthia Revo, even though she gets on my nerves. I can't, I can't, I can't hold you, she can act and blow her ass off, she can sing, baby is singing, the notes are there. Ariana Grande, who was going by Ariana Grande, uh, Batara, she's going by her, uh, the the other last name. You know, to show her an- her Italian ancestry. Um, she, she's awesome, she's awesome, she plays an incredible Glinda. Um, anybody who was a critic, thought she wasn't gonna pull it off. She ate, she ate, I I fear she ate, she ate, she did it, she did it and I mean. I can see a campaign for best supporting actress, I don't know if she's gonna win that, I don't think she's gonna win. But I could see a an Oscar campaign nominee, you know, for best supporting actress nomination, she is strong in that role. Um, Cynthia Revo is Alphaba, I don't know, maybe some Golden Globe nominations there. Um, cause I do think the Oscar Best Actress race is a little stacked. But they both do deliver great performances, it is an acting musical wheelhouse, production is lovely. Um, it does live up to the hype, um, I was thoroughly impressed, I I definitely appreciated. It and I, they really do play, pay good homage to the Broadway legacy of uh, wicked, there's a lot of fun cameos. And some exciting moments, I will leave it at that, but it is very, very good and honestly. If you are going to the movies, you know, November twenty second or Thanksgiving weekend, maybe make it a double feature, go see. You know, look, go see Gladiator two with the family on Thanksgiving, go see Wicked the weekend before, I don't know what to tell you, but. It's giving double feature energy, I mean, it i- it is feeling like, you know, Oppenheimer Barbie, it is giving Barbie Heimer energy. But well, well, but well in regard though, because the acting was great, I mean, Gladiator two was phenomenal, you know. But th- there's just some good movies out right now, so. I mean, I really feel like this is gonna be a really great competitive Oscar season, there's a lot of good movies coming out, y'all, and honestly. It's worth going to theaters to see it and it's worth, you know, checking out, so I just wanna make that, I just wanna make that clear. So as far as music goes, um. Gaga's in her new era, you know, disease, the new single from what will be, I believe Gaga's seventh studio album. Is coming, it's here, it's here. So the music video, um, it's cool, it's not bad, it's not phenomenal. Um, I will say that it is, you know, people will say the old Gaga is back. There is a sense of old Gaga back, but a more mature Gaga with the old Gaga. So she's back to her creepy haunted ways, but there is a maturity and power in the vocals that. She hasn't done in quite a while, I did like Chromatica, that was four years ago. Um, and I really did like Chromatica, like I played Chromatica. Out when it first came out, I will say, and I haven't played it since to be honest, but. When Chromatica first came out, y'all, I was into it, I played that album out. I really liked the album, I mean, it really, it really was one of those pandemic hour albums, that Folklore. After Hours by The Weeknd, those are like, oh, um, Dua Lipa, uh. You know, Dua Lipa's album, Future Nostalgia, Baby. Ooh, those are, like, when I think of those albums, I played those albums out during the pandemic, they were phenomenal. Um, Poison is good, it's a good song, it it just reminds me of of her, her, her usual work. The video was compelling, it was an interesting video, you know, it's always got that gory weirdness to her that she's known for. Um, but she's doing her thing. Um, Bruno Mars is back, he's coming back, y'all, Bruno Mars has made now two appearances on the Billboard charts in the past. Couple of weeks, Bruno Mars is back, um, he's got a song with another artist, a K-pop artist, I believe, the song is called ATP. He ain't really doing nothing he hasn't already done, but it's obvious that Bruno has sobered up and he's ready, okay, no shade. Uh, but he has definitely got himself ready to come back into the spotlight and you know what, I like this for him. Because there's a lot of artists, no names, that don't know how to take a fucking break. And I like an artist that takes a break and makes me miss them. So that when they come back, I'm like, okay, I'm ready for them, it's time. Like Bruno Mars knows how to take a fucking break, right? Leave the Door Open, Silk Sonic album, you know, that was about what, four, five, what, four, five, you know, what, three years ago, I believe. It's time, you know, he took a night, you know, he had a little era, right, Leave the Door Open, that was like during the pandemic, had a nice little era. Now, okay, Bruno wants to come back, okay. One thing about Bruno Mars though is, he don't, you know, he don't really do anything new. But it's nice to hear him, but he's kinda like always kinda like innocuous, every time I think of Bruno Mars. I think of of him being innocuous, he's very safe, he's very popular, like he doesn't really shake the table. It works for him, like when I think of artists like, like Ed Sheeran. Like Pink, like, they're very talented, but they're never gonna like really shake the table. Like, they're no Beyonce, but no one's Beyonce at this point. But I will say Gaga, I do appreciate Gaga coming back, you know, she loves to do little jazzy stuff. But I love that she's going back to her, you know, her, her, her Je ne sais quoi. Um, and so that's, that's good for her, so I I gotta say I appreciate that. As far as TV this week, the Halloween episode of Abbott Elementary that just passed was great. Um, you know, Halloween didn't feel like Halloween this year, I don't know, maybe because we're scared out by the election that we're just not giving a fuck as much. I literally did nothing for Halloween, like, I really did not, I didn't do any trick or treating, I didn't do no candies, I didn't do no costumes. Like, I've just been, I mean, this year is scary enough, like, this election has been spooky enough. That honestly Halloween just would have felt like silliness, I don't know. Halloween just feels like, I don't know, I maybe because I'm getting older, I don't, you know, I don't know. Um. I guess what I did do to celebrate Halloween was I did enjoy, uh, Abbott Elementary, I did enjoy the Halloween episode that they had, it was really fun and cute. And a really great storyline. Um, you know, you know, look, Zeus got, you know, baddies, baddies is coming back, baddies Midwest. What can I say, you know, I'm a sucker for bad TV, baddies Midwest is here, baby, Jocelyn is still doing her thing, but baddies Midwest. But I I do wanna take a segment to talk about one particular show, it's not even a TV show. I'm not even gonna waste my time and waste my breath talking about that silliness that is, uh, what is that nonsense? What's the nonsense y'all be wanting me to watch now, y'all want me to talk about, what's that shit, um, Beauty and the Black, yeah, we're not talking about that nonsense. But cable TV. Do y'all selves a favor. On behalf of journalists, please do not hyper-watch cable news, I know y'all not gonna, I know y'all not gonna listen to me. But take my advice, try not to watch cable news this week. Try not to fixate on all the bullshits and the maps and predictions and the, and the, and the double talk, please do not give Van Jones your ratings. I I beg of you, I mean, last week, the nonsense that happened on Abby Phillip, right? They had that man that made that very racist Islamophobic remark to Mehdi Hassan, was so disrespectful. And they, you know, he got taken off the show, Abby Phillip, they're a big one, took him off the show. But to be honest, why was this man even platformed and given the platform, like, there's just times where I'm just, I look at some of this stuff and I really, they want us to. Root and cheer and clap for the mediocrity, but cable news have been failing us, I don't care if they're on the left, on the right. I'm just tired of all of the analysis that just falls from the sky. So I really want people. To like. Take a cha- take a step back. And and really watch local news broadcasters, like serious news reporters, like really give local media a chance. Give these, these other broadcasters a chance because I am tired of the same tired narratives, okay? I say that with love, but please people, mix it up this cycle, like really diversify. Your content this election cycle because it needs to happen. So, I just wanted to put that out there. And that's this episode, like, I really, you know, look, I might give y'all a special edition. This week, the pin on the outcome election, you know, we'll see. But at this point, vote, vote, I know y'all registered, but don't skip this day, wait in the line, stay in the line, y'all got to eight PM on Tuesday. Stay in that line, y'all, please do, uh, because it's gonna matter. Um, I will not be going to the the rally, now I've heard so far that that election day, today's election day eve. Um, on Monday, there's gonna be the big rally, um, in Pittsburgh and Philadelphia. Uh, Pittsburgh and Philadelphia is gonna have, um, talent, now they're saying that in, in Philadelphia. There's gonna be, there's gonna be a performance and remarks, they talking about DJ Cassidy, Fat Joe, Freeway, Just Blaze, Lady Gaga. DJ Jazzy Jeff, Ricky Martin, The Roots, Jasmine Sullivan, Adam Blackstone and Oprah Winfrey. That is what they're saying the talent's gonna be right now. Look, if Taylor Swift comes out, and again, she won't perform, but Taylor Swift comes out, y'all. We'll see, but we got Gaga though, like Lady Gaga's coming, The Roots is gonna be there. Oprah is gonna be in the building, so like, this is a big deal. This is a big deal, so. Just wanted to put that out there, it's gonna be a big deal, be safe. Okay, be safe, be safe. They're saying that Harrison Trump is neck and neck, I call bullshit, but we'll see. Okay? That's, that's, that's all I got. That's all I got about this election, y'all. We got it, she's gonna win, keep the faith. And as always, be well and be best.
Earnestly Speaking is recorded in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania and can be found on Apple Podcasts, Google Podcasts. To stay up to date with the latest on the show, follow me on Facebook, Twitter and Instagram, at Mr. Ernest Owens. Use the hashtag Earnestly Speaking to tell me what you thought about this episode and check out my website at earnestowens.com.